Okay, welcome to the Wareham Board of Selectmen's June 23, 2015 meeting. Could I have a rule -- oh, wait a minute. First, could I have a motion to appoint Peter Clerk Pro-Tim?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero.
Three zero one.
Three zero one. You're gonna -- okay. All right, could I have a roll call, please?
President of four selectmen, Selectman Holmes, Selectman Slavin, Chairman Troppiano, Selectman Titlebaum, and also Town Council Bowen.
Town Administrator will be coming a little bit late.
All right, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, please. Jerry, how about leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'm all right.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Announcements, Mr. Slavin.
Okay. Wareham Historical Society, 39th Annual Antique and Crafts Fair, Saturday, July 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., rain or shine, let's hope for shine. Antiques at the Village Green, Center Park, Main Street, Wareham. Crafts Fair at the Congregational Church Hall, which is right across from the Center Park. $3 admission includes a tour of the fairing tavern museum. Wareham Minutemen Militia will muster at noon. Frank McNamee will be giving appraisals on antiques. One item for $5, three items for $10. That will be from 10 o'clock until 2:00 p.m. And that's when they also -- there'll be food at the Thatcher Hall next door to the Congregational Church available to buy. The seniors, Council on Aging, come out and play. Activities and pizza party, free to all senior citizens. June 30th, 10:00 a.m., Community Room at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road. Joe Salerno will be putting us through our paces with some fun games learned to play. I believe Mr. Salerno is also sponsoring this as well. There'll be WII bowling, I think it's the electronic WI --
Is it called Y something?
Y.
You know, electronics game, Y.
Whatever, sorry. Whatever's written here is not quite right. Domino's, that's easy when you sit down. Chair volleyball. After you've worked an appetite, stay and enjoy some Mark Anthony's world famous pizza. Salad desserts provided by the local cooks at the senior center, and again, free for all seniors, sponsored by the Council on Aging. Relay for Life, which just this past week just says, "Thank you to everybody involved." It was very successful, it was a great time for everybody, and unfortunately, I think that night, they kinda got rained and drowned out, but they all survived. The other thing is the Don't Trash Wareham group has continued, they're looking for people to adopt sections of a street, area where they live, neighborhoods, et cetera, for an ongoing to keep the areas clean once we cleaned up. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Mr. Holmes.
Thank you very much. If you would indulge me for a moment.
Sure.
A short story. About, oh, I don't know now, I guess maybe eight years ago, we, Dolores and I moved to Onset. We rented up in Onset Heights, which is up behind, in the hills there between the water and the golf course. And, you know, new people to town, we didn't know anybody, we didn't cook a lot, we were both pretty busy people. So, the first thing most couples usually do with people to a new town is they go out and eat breakfast. And we went to Peer View Restaurant in Onset. It's close to the house, and we met a young lady there. It was a little feisty and a firecracker, as most of you will know in a minute. And we kept going back, and we kept going back. And we never left after the fourth or fifth visit without a hug on the way in or on the way out. And when we brought Sean there, he was small at the time, he learned that you never left or came without a hug and a kiss, and God bless you, because that's our heritage. And last week, we lost Ms. Dottie. And, you know, I know that we honor people on boards and people and committees and all that kinda stuff, and we give out citizens' awards to people, but, you know, there are, as George Herbert Walker Bush would call them, points of light in our town. And she was one of those. She was like an ambassador for our town and for the village of Onset. And so, Mr. Chairman, if you could, just take a moment.
Absolutely.
And everybody here knows her for many, many years. She was just a dear friend, and she lost a tough fight, but let everybody know that in her family, she has a big family. Everybody was related there, right, Jerry? And so, you know, prayers go out to her family and thoughts, and someday, maybe we can do something for her, is a certificate later or something, because although she didn't serve on boards, you know, she did a lot for the town. So, thank you very much.
Anything else, Steve? No?
Say, one other thing on the -- we did try to count signs last night, and outside of the trash Wareham signs, we only counted six, and they were business guys who were doing stuff, and that's okay for them, you know, when they're working there, they put their little yacht sign. But that was all through Onset Avenue, Depot Street, so it was another one, we couldn't really make out what it was for. It was for a solar thing, but I think that people in that house put a solar thing on, so I think people are getting the message, at least on some of the roads, not to put the signs up. But we do have some leftovers on the Relay for Life, if anybody wants to pick them up and --
They'll all be coming down now, yeah.
Anybody wants to pick them up and bring them in, I'll take responsibility to get them back to the lady, because I have her email address, and I can just let her know that we have some.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, nothing. Okay. Citizens' participation, please. Come on down there, Ms. Slavin.
I forgot a panel.
Huh?
Shouldn't have been there.
Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Thank you, I'd just like to have some clarification, following up to Mr. Holmes, signs on the side of the road. Who, if we find there's a sign that, who do we call to see if it's an authorized sign? Who is the authority to pick up unauthorized signs? I understand that we did allow some signs for Onset Music and some like that, and Relay for Life, and Litter, Keep Wareham Clean, but I'm seeing signs for something like The Good Shepherd. I'm seeing signs for if you want to, you know, your roof cleaned or whatever, those type of business signs are showing up in the, you know, the stake in the ground. I was just wondering, who has a list of what has been approved by the selectmen, and who does anyone call to get a sign removed if they feel they're not authorized?
You can call the building inspector's office, I can tell you that, that's his job. There is only one person so far that I know of that is approved, and that's because, I mentioned it this morning, as a sign person, and that's right in the back of the room right there. He's the only one that's been approved so far.
So, we have citizens that can go pick up signs?
There'll be appointed people that can do that, yes. And right now, Mr. Walters is the only one.
Okay.
Other than the building inspector himself, of course.
All right. So, I'll get Dave's phone number.
And there is a list, the only thing that we approve is in our office, and there's a list available. So far, right now, the Onset Bay has some out there.
Yep.
The Relay for Life is out there. The trash signs, the Relay for Life signs are coming down now, the event's over. The other signs are due at the end of the month, they'll be gone, the trash Wareham signs will be gone, so we're getting down to the nitty gritty on signs as far as that goes. All those other signs, Sell Your House, whatever, they're on telephone poles and all on town property, none of them belong there at all. Matter of fact, some Wigwam signs, Pope showed up this week. Did you see those?
Because they had their summer event.
But it was a big white board with this ugly red stuff on it, and they were the ugliest signs I ever saw.
Now, on weekends, if somebody's having an open house or a yard sale, can they be posted for the one day?
Huh?
On weekends, if somebody's having a yard sale or an open house, can they be put out there for just the one day of the event and then taken down?
They can't be put on town property at all.
At all?
At all.
Okay, so if anything shows up for a yard sale down the street or an open house, it cannot be placed there?
Can't be there, no.
All right.
I think the regular building inspector and the other inspectors are also authorized by Dave.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Dave and the regular building inspector and the other inspectors are also authorized, so, you know.
Sorry, the second thing. Just got an email that if a board committee or commission wants to speak to Mr. Bowen, they need to send an email to the department, the selectmen's office.
Correct.
Not you, but the selectmen's office.
They send it to the selectmen's office, it actually comes to me. It'll come to me, a copy will be sent to Mr. Bowen, and a copy will get to Mr. Sullivan. This is a new procedure, you have to tell us what it is that you wanna talk to him about.
Yep.
For one, so he can be prepared. For two, he may be able to answer it relatively quickly without a meeting. And for three, it has to be able to be scheduled in the time, and he needs to know how much time he's gonna need.
So, we just use the BOS email?
Yes.
And the office will take care of passing it out now?
Yes, please.
Does that still mean that the committee must approve this first? I mean, that's the part of the policy, is that the committee must vote in a meeting to authorize --
Yes, your committee still has to prove it.
Okay, so that still has to happen?
That doesn't change, correct.
Okay, so, okay, only how we get to see Mr. Bowen has changed.
Correct. Correct. Absolutely. Well, it wasn't set up that way, but we, if it was, that's the way you had it, that's the way it is gonna be now. It works out much better for Mr. Bowen to know ahead of time what he's gonna be discussing and so on. It really is, you know, we're lucky that Rich is a very talented guy, and he's been around the business for a long, long time. And so, he has a lot of stuff that he can pop off to people relatively quickly because he has all that memory. But to really give you answers and really understand what's going on, he's gotta know ahead of time what's going on. And sometimes, he can answer it really quick, and doesn't have to, you know what I mean? And it can happen bing bing. And so, we'll move on as far as that goes, all right?
There was a third thing, but I forgot.
I'm afraid to ask.
I forgot between my chair and here, so I'll save it for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else's citizens' participation? Come on, Jerry.
Yes, I'm Gerald Brown, I'm changing the signs. I know that we haven't given people putting up signs, but let me tell you right now, it may be just me, but I'm sick of seeing those Keep Wareham signs, Keep Wareham Clean. Man, there's so many signs, it's funny, it's, I don't know, I don't know what to say. I think that they should be taken down.
Thank you.
It's sickening.
Thank you, Jerry. They do, they come down next week. All right, anybody else? I'm gonna get you, just hang in there, okay? All right, next, did you wanna say something, Peter? I saw you with a little --
No, I'll let it go.
Okay. All right, next up is appointments, please. Can you take us through what you have for appointments?
Yes, we have the Bike Path Committee. There's an application from Michael G. Langford, 5 Emma Lane, Wareham, Mass. Has expressed interest in being reappointed to the Bike Path Committee. I'll make a motion, the Board of Selectmen appoint Michael G. Langford, 5 Emma Lane, Wareham, Mass, 02571, to appoint him as a member to the Bike Path Committee to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
A motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion?
The Bike Path Committee has been given certain monies through CPC to get Bike Path done. Not a little, I'm very disappointed in the timeframe that's gone by, and nothing has really happened. Mr. Langford has been the chairman of this committee. I do work through Serp Ed, and I know that Matt Apois and Marion both have $2 million press projects approved by the TIP program for their Bike Pass, and they came after us starting. So, I know ours is a little more difficult, because they originally hoped to use the rail beds, and both Marion and Matt Apois were able to, because those beds have become inactive. Part of Wareham's bed is still being used, but the bottom line is that they have a project coming forward for the Bike Path, for Mine and Ab, through Serp Ed, but in the overall scheme of things, they're just way behind. And if they don't get things done quickly, it won't happen.
All right.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for them, but this is just a kick in the pants, if you wanna call it. Basically, get your act together and get this thing moving. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, maybe to solve Alan's issue, we could ask the, Mike has always been willing to come in and meet with the board, and maybe we could ask him to come in, and then agenda item in a couple of weeks and bring us up to speed as to where we're at.
Yeah, I'll ask him to come in. All right? I'll ask him to come in.
You know, but you might know, but you're complaining the board doesn't, so we wanna talk to him.
Yeah, yeah, we'll ask him to come in. We'll ask him to come in, okay?
I'm afraid we're gonna get to a point where there'll be no money for us.
All right. So, a motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Next, please.
Okay, next, appointments to the Board of Health. First is a request for reappointment. Frank De Felice, I move that Frank De Felice, 53, I believe it's Mackey Way, not Make Way, West Wareham, be appointed as a member of the Board of Health to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Okay, I have another one for the Board of Health, Catherine Finney, who's also expressed interest in reappointment as a member of, as an associate member of the Board of Health. I move Catherine Finney, 10 Galt Road, West Wareham, Mass, be appointed by the Board of Selectmen as an associate member to the Board of Health to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero.
Next up, Conservation Commission. We have an application for reappointment by Mark Carboni. The Conservation Commission followed our policy and voted five zero zero to support his reappointment. It also has a letter here from Mr. Carboni requesting reappointment. I move to reappoint, or rather, to appoint Mark Carboni, 4 Marsh Avenue, Wareham, Mass, as a member of the Conservation Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero.
And you wanna be the hold on this next one?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna hold that, because when, when that came up the last time, everybody was here, and I want everybody to be here.
Okay.
For the, for the, for the second go around, okay?
They've already held on it for the office.
Yeah, so let's put a hold until next meeting, which will be on the 7th. I'll bring it in the 7th, everybody should be here. Steve, will you be here on the 7th?
What is this, to redo this? We vote on this one?
We voted it, we voted it, but they, the board has asked that we reevaluate and see if we're gonna change our minds.
I'm not gonna be here on the 7th.
Yeah, no, it won't be? All right, so I'll put it on the following week. So, when the whole board's here, we'll vote on it again, or at least entertain it, okay? All right, next.
Next up, Historic District Commission.
Because that's not a, there's not a time on that one, because we already voted on that. So, it's not a time issue.
No, there's no time on it. Time is the issue. Time isn't the issue at all.
We have Cheryl Knapp seeking reappointment to the Historic District Commission. I move that Cheryl Knapp of 521 Main Street, Wareham, be appointed as a member to the Historic District Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Okay. We got zoning, it says zoning on there.
And I have another request for reappointment to the Wareham Historic District Commission by Mr. Robert Blair, 10 Barlow Avenue. I move, Robert Blair of 10 Barlow Ave, West Wareham, Mass, be appointed as a member of the Historic District Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero.
On the agenda, it says ZBA, but I don't see that in here, so let me check. Make sure it's not in our packets.
Shouldn't be anybody for the zoning board of appeals, we did them last week.
I thought so. Okay, so that's just a carryover, all right.
Yeah, we did them last week.
Yeah, we won't take that up since it doesn't exist.
Nope, that's it, right?
That's it for appointments.
All right, next up, town business. Vote to sign the Mylars, I need a motion to sign the Mylars for Beauchamp Way and Lynn Road, which was approved in the 2015 Springtown meeting. Here's the Mylar and the --
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Discussion and vote to repair on a private road. I don't believe this came in. It was put on the agenda --
You gonna record him?
-- waiting for the paperwork so that we could approve, somebody, you know, one of the roads wanted to be repaired, and Menard's paperwork we were waiting for, and it hasn't come in. I believe that's not in the packet, is that correct?
Hold on one second.
What's this?
Well, maybe it is there.
We do in fact have it, this is for Bass Cove --
Okay, good, maybe it did come in.
Cove Lane, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good, maybe it did come in then. Wasn't in earlier, so.
Right, I have here --
Yep.
The request from Municipal Maintenance to Town Administrator Sullivan, who approved it on his end, and it's been approved to come before us.
Right. So, it's an approval for a total cost of $490.40?
$490.40, that's correct.
Okay, so could you make a motion then, please?
I move to authorize Municipal Maintenance Department to repair, to repair the private road known as Bass Cove Lane. Labor cost of $360.40, fuel cost of $130, total cost of $490.40. The appropriate paperwork is attached.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? Made by Mr. Slavin, discussion, Mr. Holmes.
Yes, Chairman, you know, I have some issues with this stuff. I wish Mr. Sullivan was here to ask him some questions about this, because I don't, it doesn't really, it doesn't tell us what the repair is, right? It doesn't tell us --
Grading. I'm pretty sure it's grading, but --
I don't know how much, $490, so it seems pretty cheap to me, when he's using our, our guys to do this, and we can't get our regular work done.
I think that this is a loader issue, it's not a loader, but is a --
I know, but --
It's a grader.
I think we should have, I think we should have that information that tells us what this is. And then, who's responsible for this after?
What do you mean, to repair it?
Once they go and do the work.
Yeah.
That's it.
And these people are, people are paying now.
Yeah.
As a matter of a contract with the town.
Yeah.
And then, they're not satisfied, or something happens to the work that we do, because we do other work as well, who's responsible for that work?
Well, we just do what, Mr. Bowen, can you weigh in on that for us, please? I believe we just do what, according to the agreement we have with them, we just, we just do the work that we say we do, and then we, then it's back to them, it's, they still own it, still their issue.
I don't understand who owns the road.
It's still their issue.
Who owns the work?
Well, the work is just grading, so.
Well, we do other work, it's not just grading. This might be just for grading, but what if they're not satisfied with the grade job for $490? Do we have to go back and do it again? It's a contract, two people have to agree.
Huh? It's possible. It's possible.
Great, he asked you.
Sure.
If you have an answer.
Just waiting.
You're waiting?
Till everyone's settled. But, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the bylaw provides, you're right, there is a contract, but part of that contract per the bylaw is that the residents must agree to defend and indemnify the town from claims. And part of that would, would be a release to the town for the work that is done. The town isn't warranting that we're building a superhighway, or that it's even gonna be a fabulous job, it's just going out to do the work that's necessary to make the private way passable. And the only reason that the bylaw even allows us to do that is, number one, it's open to public use, and number two, at least 50% of the butters who have, at least 50% of the frontage have petitioned for it.
Is there anything, is there anything in there that prevents the residents from hiring a private contractor?
No.
No.
They could always do that. No, they could always do that, yeah. It costs them a lot more money.
Well, I'd like to know what a private, well, but we're taking away from our, our citizens and taxpayers that go out and do side work. You know, we got sand that's never been picked up on Main Avenue, the main thoroughfare at Onset was never done. I mean, the place looks like a pigpen. We have, we have crime scene tape near the boat ramp with trees laying all over the ground. You talk about podunk last week, I, I couldn't get the email, I couldn't get my email to Rich quick enough. Would you ever use my word, Mr. Chairman? I almost fell out of my chair watching the meeting. And, you know, and here we are, taking a team of guys to go grade a road. And I just wonder, what's the priority for $490 bucks? I'd rather see Main Avenue cleaned up, I'd rather see those trees removed, the crime scene tape taken out, as opposed to sending somebody to go, $490 bucks, how much are we making?
Just to answer, the way this works out is that we basically have been asked to fix it, but the municipal maintenance does it at their convenience when they, when they have spare time to do it. If they have jobs in front of them, that's what they do first, there's no guarantee. Plus, also, these people have to pay upfront as well. When they pay the money, that doesn't mean we're gonna do it tomorrow.
So, this wouldn't get done this year, then? Because from what I can see, we have a long list of things that we haven't finished yet. I was hoping he was here tonight, and we could ask some questions.
This could take a while to get to, yes. And if we have a major rainstorm after they grade it and it washes out, which is possible with the dirt road, we're not responsible either of those.
We're not responsible.
No, actually, it says right in here, that we're not, the thing that they signed, they all agreed to.
That they're not, we're not responsible if they don't like the job.
Nope. Go ahead.
I'm just trying to figure out, because now if you go back, it's more than $490 bucks. And we got work that's not being done.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, under Section 18 of the bylaws, there's a provision that says the town shall not be liable on account of any damage, whatever caused by such repairs, and Section 25 of Chapter 84 shall not apply. And it goes on, "The Board of Selectmen may require an indemnity agreement executed by said petitioning of butters indemnifying the town for all claims and damages which may result from making such repairs." Certainly, as part of your vote, you could include in the motion, you know, and further to require an indemnity agreement as provided by the bylaw.
Actually, it's written right in the --
It's already in the form.
It's in the petition that they sign.
Part of the form.
And further indemnify the town for all claims and damages may result of such repairs. They have to sign on to it, so.
Sure, I would just add that to your motion.
You would like to add it to the motion, please?
Patrick, Mr. Chairman, I think we're answering two different questions. I didn't ask about, well, I guess it's part of my question.
Yeah, it was.
My question is, yeah, I understand, we go down, we grade a road, we hit somebody's car, I understand that part. We go down and grade this road, and the guys leave, and the people have already paid, and then they cry and moan, they're not satisfied with the job. Do we have to go back?
No.
Or if we do, we do a job down there?
Not according to this, we don't.
We don't have to go back?
Nope.
So they're taking a chance that we're going to do the job, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, yes. You're absolutely right. If you want a warranty, go to the private sector.
Right.
The way the bylaw is written up, there's no warranty.
I see. Okay, well, that's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, okay.
I understand the other part. If you damage somebody's mailbox, we're on the line to fix that, right? But I didn't know.
We run off the road.
I still, I still have an issue with using our guys for this, because they're not getting the real work done. The regular work's not getting done, and when would this get done?
I'll remove my motion so we can change it.
Yeah, I would draw my second.
Then why don't you read it off the form, Peter?
I'll just read the indemnification language off of it.
Okay.
Accept the motion including indemnification.
The heck did I put it now?
Yeah, you want this one?
Well, I'm going to have to organize it for this anyway. Now you're confusing.
You can just accept the motion with the indemnification.
Okay. I move to authorize the road repair request of Bass Cove Lane, a private road, contingent upon the owners and the butters thereof to indemnify the town for all claims and damages which may result from such repairs. Repairs to be performed, the total amount of $490.40, $360.40 for labor, $130 for diesel.
I'm going to read that also.
Read what? I already read the language.
He just read it.
He did?
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Mr. Slavin. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye, as long as it's done after Main Avenue.
It's unanimous. 4-0-0.
It does look pretty bad, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next up, we have pending issues. This shouldn't have been on here. This is supposed to be in the first week in July, so we're going to take it off.
When you say, is that the list?
That list, yeah. And I actually told her to put it on for the first meeting in July, and somehow it ended up on here, so I just ignored it and we'll move on. All right, next is 48-hour business. Mr. Titlebaum.
I have none.
Mr. Holmes.
No, thank you.
Mr. Slavin, okay, I have one. Could you come down, ma'am? Could you state your name for me and for the record, please?
Marie Ferris.
Ferris?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so Mrs. Ferris came to the office, and she had gone, had on April the 1st filed for a sewer abatement. That would be when we were the sewer commissioners. For some reason or another, it languished down the office down there, never got to us. They said they lost it, they had various odd reasons, for whatever reason. The argument with her house is she's being charged for a two-family. Now, our records show that it's a single-family home, not only in the assessor's office, but the billing inspector who I spoke to today also say, says it's a single-family home. But he is charging as if it's a duplex, so she's trying to get that abated. So she got on, she finally got them to have a meeting for the abatement, right, as I understand. They told her the meeting was at 7:00 at Town Hall. She showed up at 7:00. Only the meeting was at 6:30. And they voted against it, and she asked to have it reviewed, and they said no. So all I'm asking is, in view of the fact that it was under our, really under, at the time that it came in, we were the sewer commissioners, and the fact that our, our town departments say that this is a single-family home, which it is, according to everyone, that we're, that you allow me to write a letter to the sewer department, ask them to review it for the young lady, so that they, so that I send the documentation showing that it's a single-family home, and asking that they review it for her again. That's what I'm asking.
So moved to authorize.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Just for background, this came up a little bit earlier than April.
We didn't ask for background, by the way.
We did receive some email about this. I personally did, at the time, I think I was still Chair, corresponded with Mr. Campina about this issue, and as Patrick said, both our assessor, Jackie, and also our code enforcement officer and director of special services agreed it was a single-family house, and at the time, when I spoke to Guy, he said he would be taking care of it and would take care of the issue. I'm very disappointed that all of a sudden it's gone the opposite way of what was agreed to.
Why didn't we do it, though?
It never came before.
He never got it to us.
I recall something about a single and double family, though.
Yeah, there was, but they never filed the abatement and come to us.
And I don't know for what reason he didn't.
Do you know why they said no, ma'am?
No.
No.
Actually, she can tell you, but we wrote, I read the, they basically just said, "We turned you down." They didn't give her a reason.
No.
We're charging her for two.
They're charging her two.
Two EDUs.
Two EDUs.
For a single-family home.
For a single family.
And they said no.
Yeah, they said no, even though both the assessor and the director says no.
Now, they have voted to adopt the policy of, at some point, maybe within the next year, they're going to do the policy. Remember, we agreed, and we sent that to them?
Oh, right, right, right.
Right, to have the change to water rates? Well, they have actually agreed to that, and they have voted to accept it with a base fee and then an overage.
Yeah, but she's in a different state.
But, so at some point, that'll go away, because she'll only get charged accordingly. But she shouldn't be charged now for a single-family home.
Just a correction to that, she would be charged for two base fees if they're considering it a duplex.
Well, that's true. They're charged for two base fees. That's right. That's true. That's true, so we need to, anyway, we need to send a letter and ask them to review that. I think it's the only fair thing to do.
Completely in support of that.
All right, so, motion made by Peter, seconded by Mr. Slavin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right. We will write a letter to them, and hopefully they'll listen to us. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you coming in. Bye-bye. All right, next up is liaison reports. There's no town administrator's report tonight. Liaison reports, Mr. Holmes. No. Mr. Slavin.
All right, I know, I know, it's a short night. But I do want to say that, you know, on the trash, you know, a lot of folks down on that Cranbury Highway, you know, we are just fighting the devil to try to keep people keeping the place clean. People are trying. They're down there painting their fences. They're down there cutting the grass. And speaking of grass, this was my question for the week. I know that we're having, and I wish he was here, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I know that there was some conversation about a junior's program or a summer program for the kids' jobs. Is he still doing that?
I don't know. I don't have the answer to that, I'm sorry.
I have a senior from high school, just graduated, young kid, young man, I'm sorry, does a very nice job, and you know, what I was thinking was, like, Main Avenue, when you come in, and the place, they never did this. I cannot believe anybody who knows anything about Wareham on said, doesn't understand that's the main thoroughfare in. But when you get over the dummy bridge, right, there's that little island there, with the plants, and then you go a little bit further past that, right, and we got the boat.
The boat ramp coming into the left.
Crime scene tape and the tree branches, and then right across the street is that oval, right? I think there's another little island there. And places like that, I mean, couldn't we get some of these kids to cut grass? And pay them, I don't know, five bucks an hour or something, or just 20 bucks to go there once a month, and just do that? I mean, we'd take them no time at all. They could sign a waiver, we're leaving the town.
Cedar was working on a program, I know. Cedar was working on a program.
And just give them like, you know, 20 bucks or 25 bucks a month, or pay them 100 and have them do four pieces. Because our guys can't do it. They just, they just are not going to keep it up. It looks awful. And if you can pay these kids, and that would be a great part of the program. Yeah, maybe if you can even raise some money, throw a cake sale or something to pay these kids. But it would be great to have some kids come in and do that.
You know, we have a...
And that is town property, and I am only talking about town property. I'd suggested to him yesterday that he go down Main Avenue, and if there's a house with high grass, cut the grass and leave a bill on the mailbox.
Well, I'm going to, I went to a playground.
Well, Patrick said, he threw out all the rules last week when he put that thing in the paper about the signs. So I told the kid, just go cut the grass, leave a little bill for 10 bucks on the mailbox. People will give you the 10 bucks. Some people will. So that's what he's been doing. He's been trying to go to those houses and knock on those doors and say, hey, you know, I'm a kid, I'm trying to make a few bucks.
Right, and make a couple bucks.
And, you know, what are you going to do? But on town property, our guys will never get to that.
I must admit, I was in a playground this weekend, and I'm not going to say which one, but I'm going to go over there and cut the grass myself. The grass was as tall as I was. I swear. I swear to God, the grass was as tall as I am.
It'd be a great, a great thing for kids.
And it's not, I mean, if these guys had more help, it would work, but it just doesn't.
I just want to bring that up on the, I want to bring up that Main Avenue thing, though, because it looks awful.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin, please.
Okay, we had...
I'm sure this is going to take some time.
No, it isn't. I'm trying to be quick. We had a meeting.
9:00.
MOP, at 10:30 would be good. We'll have to go over the time limit. MOP basically approves all the tip programs, which is the state infrastructure programs for buildings and roads, et cetera. The meeting today, we were informed by the state that the CIP program that they have will be probably several months before they approve it for 2016. So therefore, they gave us the information that there'll be no state funding for any projects in our area or in any area, basically, going forward for 2016 as of right now. So there's a lot of projects that, because they require federal and state funding, will be put on hold. So we'll see what happens. It was kind of disappointing to hear that, but this is all basically because of the MBTA and its issues with the funding needed to fix that, is throwing their budget completely out of whack, and we'll see what happens.
What's that going to do to Cranbury Highway?
Well, Cranbury Highway is 2017, 2018, so this will, within two or three months, they'll have the CIP done, and we'll have a better idea what's going on. But my concern is that any time something gets in the way, the cost seems to go up 20 or 30%, which means there's less money available all the way around. That was... No, that's already done. Money's in place. That's done.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to do 28, the whole thing, but I'm talking about the islands and all that stuff.
Not our section. Not what we're looking for. I also, at the meeting today, put a request in for future consideration for our 6 and 20, actually Route 6, Route 28, and then it becomes Route 6 and 28, where the road is on both sides.
Could you talk into the microphone, please?
Yeah, the road is on both sides. We have, you know, each has a separate direction with the middle there. There was a plan at one time to make a single road through there, so I've asked them to put that on for some future consideration.
Okay.
Just, you know, and the planning board met last night with Baypoint. It's still frustrating. I think they finally gave Baypoint some direction of what they were looking for. They'll be back to in the next meeting, which will be the second week in July, and hopefully they'll get their site plan to a point where hopefully they might be able to...
I think they made a pretty good stride forward by agreeing to the lot size.
They didn't agree to the lot size, really. If you, if you were there and actually listened, there is at least two, maybe three members that still want 10,000 square feet, and basically, the group there from Stone Street were hoping to get 8,000.
Well, that's what I heard they agreed to, though.
There's, no, there was not agreement. That's, the members did not agree yet.
Wow.
There is a, that's one of the pieces that's a serious issue, and there's some issues on sewer also. Stone Street wants to use 90, not 95, they use the 95 figure. The number of single-family homes, they want to hook into the sewer system in such a way that everyone will have a grinder pump, and it'll be forced up, and there are members of the board, including the engineer, that think each one should have a gravity feed rather than that. So there are some issues there, but the biggest issue right now is to settle on the square footage per house lot, and this should have been done really upfront in the beginning to make life easy. Because how do you design something when you don't, when you don't have your square footage?
Well, I don't understand the gravity feed thing, because in our, with the type of waters, areas that we have, the grinder pumps are a way better setup.
I'm just letting you know where they're at. Well, actually, they went to the sewer department, and that's what they asked for. And Guy didn't have an answer one way or the other on it, didn't care, but what he did say was, he asked to find out whether the existing pump station on the property... So basically, when the...
Okay.
The existing, the existing pump station that belongs to Baypoint needs to have some work done to make sure it can handle the capacity. I think it might be partially clogged, and that's, I know.
Steve, mic.
When you come into town, Mr. Chairman, and this is why I want this off that list, when you come into this town and you ask a department or you ask a board, what is it you people want in Wareham? And you can't give the customer or the business owner the answer, that's where we run into this frustration.
I know.
The people ask, and this isn't the first time. I've been trying to keep quiet about it. But, you know, it's getting to be ridiculous. This has been going on for way too long. And you know what? You know what the bottom line is, Mr. Chairman? It's about $550,000 in tax revenue per year for the town when it's all said and done. So I didn't want to discuss it, but I want to bring up that point, because that's on, that's for me on that list. That's what I asked you guys and Mrs. Whiteside about the other day.
Okay.
To get him involved, Mr. Town Administrator involved, to get this stuff straightened out ahead of time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
That's it.
That's it.
Make life easier.
Mr. Titlebaum, please.
Yeah, last week, I stood in Selectman Whiteside's shoes and attended the cemetery commissioners' meeting. They had a lengthy public input session regarding the lack of water in the cemeteries. They were, the public, the members of the public who showed up were operating under, I want to say, a few misconceptions about what happened. I think the meeting was productive in that Town Administrator Sullivan and Director Menard were able to explain to them that the water has to be bought from the district, that there's a cash cost associated with that, that every year, the Municipal Maintenance Department budgets a certain amount for water. It was explained to them that $8,000 was lost to vandalism, you might say, by somebody leaving a spigot on that went undetected for a fair amount of time, that exhausted the water budget even before Memorial Day. Of course, that didn't make them happy about not being able to keep plants watered right now. They were, however, pleased to know that Director Menard has a plan to fix the issue so that going forward, we don't lose such vast amounts of water when people leave things on, so that the faucets can be shut off in a timely fashion, not be allowed to run continually 24/7. It was estimated for, what, a couple of weeks? It was a good, it was a good amount of time.
Nobody from the town saw that faucet running for two weeks?
Apparently not.
In the cemetery?
It was a good amount of time. I don't know if it was exactly two weeks. Mr. Sullivan actually has a little more... We've got to decide about this system here. This is garbage.
So, I just wanted to know if there was a...
No, no, no.
Because it kind of goes to the theme of what I've been kind of talking about tonight, is that if we don't notice a faucet's been running for two weeks, you know what I'm saying? We're burying people and we're doing things.
We have other issues up there. People washing their cars with the cemetery water. Yes.
Oh, yeah. We're going to have to come up.
See, that's a crime. You're stealing from the dead.
We don't have a bylaw.
You're stealing from the dead.
We have people that steal the mulch from there as well that we lay out.
Okay. Patrick. You are. You're taking the beautification of the cemetery stand. I know my brothers in New Bedford, man, people come and steal the lights. So you put those little lights, they come and steal that. You put flowers, they come dig the flowers, take the flowers. Stealing water from people, I mean, and the mulch. That's stealing from the dead, my God. People's families are under there.
And I think people were shocked to understand that we only get roughly, you know, $500 a year for perpetual care interest, and that all the other costs, I mean, that wouldn't, that wouldn't cover lawnmower blades when it comes down to it. So all the other costs for the cemetery maintenance is borne from tax funds.
Wow, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
So, anyway, again, a lot of people showed up upset, but I think most of them left at least somewhat contented that there is a plan going forward to both control the water and to be able to provide it.
All right.
Is that it?
All right. Yes, sir.
That's because they know you're...
Okay, Jerry.
Just to that...
Thank you, all right, whoa, whoa, whoa. Sorry, all right.
Just briefly to that point, Mr. Chairman.
This is out of, this is, this is, let's not get into it. Next, we're moving on. Consent agenda, please. Oh, wait a minute. You know what? Since the town administrator is here, do you have anything you want to add, since we skipped right over you?
No, the, I was at the Paper Mill Road, the, the bridge over the Wee Wee Antic.
The bridge over the River Kwai.
So the Mass DOT, they're in the 25% stage of the, the construction, or if you will, design of that. That looks like that will be going forward. There were a few, few people there. I believe there's six temporary easements and one permanent easement, so we will need an article at town meeting to, to take at least one easement, and unfortunately, they can only do a, a, if you will, a sidewalk on one side of the bridge, because the other side has much more wetlands and the impact to it. I was requesting, speaking to them afterwards, that we could have both sides, but they, they said because of the impact of the wetlands, plus the Tabor Paper Mill, I guess, is a historic site right there, and it's too close to do anything on that side.
You mean to tell me, a six-foot, five-foot wide sidewalk for the length of 20 feet is going to impact the wetland that much?
According to the...
Who's kidding who here? Are we losing our minds?
Yep.
I mean, come on, folks. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter whether you're a tree hugger. I mean, that's completely absurd. Not to mention, it's on the side of a road.
Yeah, they, they estimate it'll be a full year for the build-out, and it'll be roughly a two-point-eight mile detour. It'll take people about five minutes. And the bicyclists from the Pan Mass Challenge may be a little upset when they find their detoured as well.
Oh, God help us. Okay. Is that it? Thank you. No, I'm not happy at all after you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take ten seconds, please. I said things when he wasn't here. I just wanna.
All right, go ahead.
I mentioned a couple of things this evening. Main Road from Cranberry Highway to Onset Village is the main thoroughfare to Onset. And, and we haven't got the sand up yet, so I was wondering where, just put that on a list somewhere. And the second part is, when you come over the dummy bridge into Onset, that, when you go to the left towards Onset, on the right-hand side, there's crime scene tape there with branches that's been there for weeks. Can we get that out of there, or you want us to send a kid over to pick it up?
We'll ask the highway foreman. I'll ask municipal maintenance, ask the highway foreman.
The what?
I'll ask the highway foreman.
It wasn't a joke, guys. I mean, it's summer, and that's been there.
I'm laughing about the crime scene.
If I had a, if I had a truck, I would pick it up, but I don't have a truck. I'd be happy to do it for you, but I don't have a truck. I don't have nothing to put it in. And it just looks awful.
All right. Anybody else? All right, can I have the bills?
Oh, go ahead. The tail end of the story is, I'm not just bitching about that. But the tail end of the story is, we're taking on part-time work with these side jobs. That's how it came up, over these side jobs that our maintenance departments were going out to do.
Grading of the road for four hundred and ninety dollars, that road we're gonna grade.
So, we're taking on side jobs, and we're not getting that work done. That was my point when I brought that up. I just wanted to say it in front of you. I don't wanna say that, then you listen to it tomorrow. It was nothing against you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bowen's bill?
Yes, we have.
You're really catching up, Rich.
Yeah, he is.
Your wife must be thrilled.
You're assuming he told his wife.
It's the end of the fiscal year. He better be caught up.
Right, I have an invoice here. Law officer, Richard Bowen, professional services, May twenty-first, 2015 through June twentieth, 2015. Let's see, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor?
And for Mrs. Whiteside's edification, he listed total hours of one eleven point seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, four zero zero. Could I have the minutes for May eighth and June thirteenth, please?
Those minutes aren't executed by the clerk yet, so we'll have to hold off on voting them.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, we will not be back until July the seventh, July the seventh. Thank you and good night, Wareham.
Everybody have a good fourth.